Any other maintenance or replacement is on the village.
Right, so if it's because they freeze it, or if it freezes because they didn't keep it from freezing, then it's laid upon them. As far as any other kind of maintenance, it's laid upon the village.
It's my understanding that that's how the law reads as well.
Then, the next one is on page thirty-four.
Thirty-four, yep.
Is access to meters for them to read, which really with the new meters, it shouldn't be an issue, but until then, it's gonna be until late fall, they say that they have, they must arrange access for the village meter reader within thirty days, is what was on there. I changed it to three days, feeling that, I mean, the guys have to do their water reads that week, so they need to get them all done. If there's an issue that somebody can't get in there to allow it to be within the three days, so that they can move on and be done with it. Going forward, it really shouldn't be an issue though, because the meter's gonna have that electronic reader.
What did you say you changed?
On page thirty-four.
Page thirty-four at the bottom.
Uh, on the bottom, where it says, must arrange for access for the village meter reader within thirty days, I changed it to three days, because, well, I don't know why.
You also have. Right here, it says, should customer fail to make such arrangements for meter reading during the meter readings, our working hours, eight AM to two thirty PM, within a three-day period, a notice shall be given either by registered mail or by delivery, is that what you're talking about?
Right.
That's the second part of the sentence, the sentence, I'm sorry, the second sentence with the change, the first sentence with the change is directly in front of that.
Right, both were changed to three days, and it stated.
Both were three, mine.
Oh, do they?
Yeah, this was right here.
Okay, maybe that was something that was.
Should the villages agent empowered to read meters and or wants be unable to obtain access to meter reading if necessary, the customer may be notified of his default by leaving a notice on the premises that customer must arrange for access to the village meter reader within three days.
Okay, mine said thirty days, I.
We got two different copies.
Yeah.
None of yours at all.
Are you sure you guys don't have the old one?
That's what I had, was the old one, and that's what I updated, was the old one, 'cause I thought that's what Cory.
I thought I could do that, I.
You can't update the old one, you gotta go off of this.
No, no, when he says old one, he means the old version of the proposed new law, not the old law.
Oh, okay.
No, the provision for the new one, yes.
There might have been an old version floating around, and I was working with the previous water advisor and the mayor when we were looking at this, and we determined that there were two copies floating around at that point. So, the version that the mayor had and is proposing, and is working from is that one, so if you haven't yet, make sure to send a full copy of the one that you have with the revisions to the board.
I did.
Yeah, I think.
So it starts to write me.
I think I copied you on it too.
My, my only thing about the three days.
If you could, is this recent, like in the last day?
Uh, that was today, yeah.
Will you send me a copy, I didn't see that in my email box, so send that to me again, please.
My, my only thing about the three days, so you got a three day, and then if, another, so you're talking to six day, well, somebody's on vacation. I mean, you're dropping it from thirty days down to three, I would think.
Presumably they're not using their water on vacation, unless they're running water in order to prevent a line freezing.
Well, I'm saying, this for water meter reading, right?
Well, after.
They might be on vacation when you go to read the meters.
Well, after the six days, according to this, we're, um, this says a notice shall be given either by registered mail or by delivery to an adult member of customer's household on the premises, so. Registered, nobody's there to sign, sign for it, so.
That's true, and it can be turned back on. Why was the levy on tax rolls removed?
Huh? Nothing was, that's not removed, that was added.
Oh, okay.
Red was added, anything that crossed out was crossed out.
And that's more of a clarification, I'd understand, you were telling me about this, that, and you've asked me for an opinion as to whether or not the water service can be billed to the customer and handled differently, or if it has to be done on the tax rolls, or could you start a small claims action, and I did some research on that, this is a couple of months ago, and answered the mayor that, no, if they reside in the municipality, the municipality's only right is to put a lien on the property, that's at least according to the Nikon papers that I read, and a little bit about the water law that I have read in the past, not this law, but New York State Standards on Water Laws, that that's, if a municipal, municipality is being a water service provider, because you're not under the, the public utilities regulated. Page forty-six.
Page forty-six is levy on tax rolls.
Section four point two.
We actually give them until mid-April to pay before it gets re-leveeed. Re-levees are due to the, to Cat County by like April, like the last Friday in April is when they're due to the county, so I usually give them, I back it up a week, and people are able to pay until that Friday before they're due.
Oh, so you give them a week before?
Yeah, so we actually do like April twentieth-ish.
Okay, and that's page, what page?
Forty-six.
Okay, well, there's.
So the law gives you a generous period after that where you're.
So also, outstanding bills for properties in the village will be added to the tax roll if not paid by March. So you changed that?
But, but tax rolls, tax levies aren't due until April, end of April to the county, so I mean, you could, you could put April in, April twentieth in here.
Instead of March?
Yeah, because I get, I get several payments in April.
All right, so I'll put it in April twentieth, and then at the close of business on April twenty-fifth, does that sound?
Um, no, that would be pushing the due date to the county. I would say that they're due by the twentieth, and at the close of business on the twentieth, that the, the late fee would be added.
All right, so change that for one.
I would put April twentieth for both.
All right, so then that's when the fifteen percent late fee will be added to their bill, and added to the tax roll. So instead of the March twentieth and March twenty-fifth, for what you, what's by the time in the past, stick with April twentieth? I'm fine with that.
If that works administratively.
That's, that's my main, that's my main focus.
As long as it works for you, that's what, that part is for you, so that you can.
Mid, mid to late April, that's my focus, is re-levee, so it, it doesn't, doesn't really put any more pressure on me.
Okay, so then on page forty-six, change the levy on tax rolls that all outstanding bills for properties in the village will be added to the tax roll if not paid by April twentieth. At the close of business on April twentieth, a fifteen percent late fee shall be added to all bills that are added to the tax roll. All is in conjunction with provisions and statutes of the Village of Cataragus and Village Law for the State of New York, and is in respect, respect to the water regulations.
Does that need to say water and sewer?
Well, this is the water law.
This is the water law, I'm just, I'm just, 'cause I do, I provide three re-levee lists to the county, a water list, a sewer list, and the sewer benefit list. So I'm just trying to figure out, if I just apply the fifteen percent to the water portion.
That's correct.
Until the, okay, until the sewer law gets, okay.
Sewer, oh, dirty word, dirty word.
Okay, shall be added to, instead of all bills, can we put all water charges?
Yes, yes, all right, well, so let me change that with you.
The more we spell it out in here, the easier it is for me.
All right, so all outstanding charges, you said?
All water charges, is what you said.
Fifteen percent late fee shall be added to all water charges that are added to the tax roll.
All water charges, not bills, so it's clear. Okay, going back up on some other revisions, one thing I, that I've talked about before was, when I first came into office, was trying to see about using electronic payments, making payments online. This also would go for taxpayers to make payments here at the village, possible, I don't know, this is something we can discuss down the road, but just saying if we're able to, that the village may elect to accept credit or debit cards, or to accept payments via a website, or other electronic service, and if the village accepts, elects to accept payments in such fashion, the village may add to the cost of the bill any service charge or interchange fees the village incurs in accepting the payments. So typically, it's, I don't know, five dollars to use a debit card or whatever, but say, somebody doesn't have their checkbook, or we actually get a website up and running, and you can actually log in and pay your bill, you know, you will be assessed a fee, the village isn't gonna eat that cost, but just something that we can do down the road as far as making payments where it's not just check or money order or cash, I guess. And then, let's see here, the next one is on page forty-four, part of bills rendered and due, added that any and all charges for postage and mailing delinquent, shut-off, and termination notices will be applied to the owner's account, because the village isn't gonna be held responsible to pay for that, for them not paying the bill. In regards to delinquent accounts, on page forty-five, uh, I believe we had to change it, and I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong with you guys, what it says on yours, it says, the first part says ten percent, that all invoices issued by the village that remain unpaid after the due date shall be charged interest, and such interest shall be charged until such charges are paid in full, and shall be added to the amount due at ten percent to the amounts unpaid from the first through the thirteen, thirtieth day after the due date. And, and then instead of saying one and a half percent, change it to, again, ten percent, shall be added to the amounts that remain unpaid for each succeeding month.
Mine says five percent.
Yours says five percent, okay, I changed it to ten percent to match what the ten percent was, and then also that, if they, if they dispute, if the dispute is filed, that it'll be investigated, a formal written response will be given within, instead of twenty days, thirty days. So that'll give a little bit of time to take care of that. Is there any? That would be Rose?
I'm sorry?
You do the accounting for the water for the village, so if they're late?
Is this gonna be manageable for you? I'm just wondering if we're, you know, create a procedure that is.
Um, I've been concerned from the beginning about the new schedule of penalties and.
Fees?
Fees being.
Rates.
Added every month, it will definitely increase the workload related to water billing. We're going, we're going from one penalty a quarter to.
What I can do is, so that it's not difficult for you, is what I can do is I could create a water, I could create a spreadsheet for you that'll automatically calculate.
Well, I have a program, it's just.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, I have a program that does the water billing.
Okay.
So it's just a matter of, that'll have to be a penalty that's added into the schedule, but for me to go in and actually do the penalty, you know, apply the penalties to the accounts, and it's just, that and the, the additional mailing of bills, I didn't bring it with me today, but I was working on a spreadsheet chart of, of, okay, here's the billing, here's the first penalty, here's, you know, mailing the delinquent bills, plus adding another penalty and another penalty, and then we have a new billing, and I was working on a chart for that. I'd be happy to get a copy to you guys, so you can see what that's gonna look like, it will, it will increase the workload. I honestly couldn't tell you if it's unmanageable at this point, 'cause I haven't done it.
The question I have is, is the penalty, it, it isn't an uprush to make revenue, the penalty is to get them to pay the bill.
Get them to pay the bill.
So sometimes it's, we can forgive this if you do it by a certain date, but after a certain day, I mean, it's, sometimes it's the way it's presented, you know, it's a.
Okay, yeah.
You know, so I just, I think as we go forward, we better just make sure that this is manageable, and it gives us the effect that we really want, rather than resentment, and more problems.
If the village does choose to allow waiving of certain fees, there must be a written policy that's followed for everybody who, so it doesn't get applied inconsistently, so there's no possibility for favoritism, not that I'm saying there is or.
Got, got to be consistent.
I'm not asking for inconsistency, as I, I'm saying that sometimes.
I'm not adding on top.
As the incentive is, if it's couched right, instead of penalizing it, we can forgive it if you have it paid by this date, but after this date, we can't do it no more.
It turns the stick into a carrot.
You know, so, and I just don't want something that's unmanageable for Rose, she's got.
All we have to do is really lay it all out in the, right, in the notice.
Right.
Have it all laid out right out there, it'll, it could all be forgiven if it's, the bill's paid by X amount, if not, thirty days later.
Right.
The big thing is, we've had people that just haven't paid at all.
Exactly, exactly.
And that's not fair to those that pay them on a regular basis, but, and to say, we just gotta make sure we couch it right, that's all.
Agreed, I agree, and another thing that I added is right now, is there anything for residents that, or not residents, excuse me, for people that use the village's water, or on the village's water system, that are town and not in the village? Is there, and there is nothing as far as a penalty for them, correct?
They get the first penalty if they don't pay by the due date, and actually penalties are, are, the due date is usually the first, and I take to the next Friday, and that's when I apply penalties to give time for bills coming by mail, or payments coming by mail, to get in and get applied before penalties are applied to the account. Flex bill is not the friendliest program, so that's, that's how I was, it's how it's been as long as I've known. So, the town, the people in the town who use the water system have that same penalty, if it's not paid by the due date, that following Friday, they have that first penalty applied. A lot of the town people, it, it, it seems as though they don't know where the shut-off is, so they're not able to shut them off. A year, a year or two ago, they had me start doing termination notices after the first quarter of billing for the people out in the town, because it's on, terminations are sent after two quarters are unpaid, but because town people don't get re-levee, they have a prior balance going into that new fiscal year where everybody else is starting off rep.
Right.
So, they get a termination notice in July, I don't know how many people are actually able to be turned off. There's, there's been question in the past about finding shut-off points for people, and.
I heard even one of them might have been paved over or covered over in some fashion.
Yeah, people have built over top, they, they've been lost, they, yeah.
In the law, I believe there was a section that you added with some teeth that says, if we can't get to the shut-off, we can have a very aggressive penalty for that.
Right, which is.
Oh, is that the next one?
Yeah, that's the next one, that's what I was getting to, is that for any customer outside the village, after the ten-day delinquency period, if the village is unable to terminate the water service, the village shall impose a five-dollar a day charge in addition to the late charges designated above, so that'll push them to, you really do wanna pay your bill. Last thing you wanna do is accrue a thousand dollar, or however much, water bill, I mean, I think the biggest thing that, a lot, just because you can't shut it off, well, that's, there needs to be some type of accountability, I guess, for them, because there's nothing, oh, so, well, you can't kinda shut my water off, so I don't ever have to pay. Well, if it gets to a certain level, then you can take it to court, and then, okay, now you're gonna, you're gonna want to.
Right, and until you get over three hundred dollars, until you reach that point, you're not breaking even.
Right.
You know, if you've got a three hundred dollar balance on someone, and you serve them and take them to small claims, you might break even on the small claims court costs. So, we've had a couple that are, that are up there, but you're not making any money, so why spend village money to make less than you're putting out?
Right. So that was another thing that I added in there, was to, so that really, everything is so that people will pay, as far as the delinquencies and all this, is to, as Rick said, is to have people pay their bill, not, oh, you're gonna do this to me because I'm not paying it, like, just pay your bill, that's the main thing. The next thing I believe, and I believe this is like the last part, if I'm not mistaken, excuse me, is on section seven, or forty-five, right after adding that little insert, was the ten-day shut-off notice. I added in there that, what is it, so, if payment's not ready to the village within ten days of the shut-off notice, the village shall post a notice of the delinquency at the residence of the delinquent account, quote-unquote posting, advising the resident of the date that the water services will be terminated, no less than five business days after the posting, so it's a clear, this is, if you don't pay this, this is when your water will be shut off by this date, there's no ifs, ands, or buts, and then also they will incur a ten-dollar charge for the posting itself. And I think that actually might be everything that.
I was thinking there wasn't anything after forty-six.
No, because we already discussed the levy on taxes. I'm going through everything, I think everything I have is that covered, everything that.
We can charge if we turn our water back on, didn't we?
Uh, it's been a thirty-five dollar charge to reconnect, it hasn't been any. Like, if people, yeah, if, if people call in and say, I need my water turned off so I can do something, we don't charge to turn it off, we charge to turn it back on.
Is there anything else that anybody would like to add to the proposed water law?
I would just like to clarify, so, how would we do this, like I said, I would like to see as responsible to the meter, and I understand that we're gonna look into this insurance, but how would we word that? We're responsible until we know whether this insurance is going to do it, or? Because right now, you said, we don't know that that's gonna even happen, that the rural water will have this.
And it's not positive, but there is a very big push in that direction.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, I would, how could we possibly word that to say that we will be responsible in the meantime?
You'd have to change at least significant portions of the maintenance section, where it says, from the curb box end, that would have to be from meter end. Though you will run into very big management problems if between now and when any change or decision comes, if there is a break in the line, and the village sends DBW employees to go and fix the line on somebody else's property without notifying them, it is technically a trespass, and there are some people that would take great umbrage of that, and could potentially sue the village and succeed.
Well, I'm saying, we'd have to go by what the current law went now until this goes into effect, but, you know what I mean?
No, I'm saying in that law, until and whenever you adopt it, but if you do, from when you adopt that until you get people's permission, then you can't go and fix the line, and it puts you in sort of a, you're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't. You've got the line, you're responsible to fix it, but until you get their permission to go on their property, the village has a liability, that if you go and don't fix the line, you will owe the people for having not fixed the line, and you can't charge them for the water service. If you don't get permission and you do go on their property, there's a huge red mark on the village's back if they want you to narrow it to village as a lawsuit for trespass, damage to property, anything like that.
Yeah, but if, if something broke, if the line is broke, and the village has to go in there and replace it.
It doesn't automatically, unless the village has an easement, it doesn't grant the village the power to go on a private front.
But, if you shut the water off, they're gonna want their line first. We have a right to shut that water off because of a leak, do we not?
Yes, that's in the law.
We shut the line off.
But it would be the proposed one.
If the water's shut off, they're gonna want it first.
It requires significant rewording of the section about if there's a leak and where it is, when the village can shut it off, because right now it says, if there's any leak after the curb box, and it's not getting from there to the meter, the village doesn't know if there's a leak there. You have, you'd have to do the total metering system that the village doesn't have yet, so unless there's a significant amount of leakage, it makes it visibly apparent, it's sometimes difficult to figure that out.
Right.
But you are right, that's, you shut the water off, it's a powerful incentive, though it does create a public nuisance, and the county department of health gets a little bit irritated about creating a public nuisance, and the village is technically the one that's responsible for paying to abate the nuisance, pay to fix that. Usually the cheaper thing to do is shut the water, or turn the water back on.
Just a simple question, if we stop at the curb, okay, okay, but the, but the problem is between the curb and the meter, right now, it is the responsibility of the property owner, right?
Right, then the theory is it's their pipe.
If we change that, and we go in and we say, jeez, we gotta tear up the guy's lawn, put in a new, that means we're responsible for the landscape and everything, too?
Yes.
I don't think we wanna be in that picture.
It depends, like a driveway, a blacktop driveway, concrete driveway, it'd have to be the homeowner to replace the concrete to replace it.
I'm just saying that right now, we've got a line of demarcation at the curb. And I, I just look at the houses on my street, and if you're saying all of a sudden now it's to the meter, you know, we're. Okay, so, we got a situation where you guys tear it up, how do you draw, how do you now say, well, jeez, it's underneath your driveway, so that's your responsibility for getting that back into shape and such.
Well, the way I look at it, if that water line has got to be replaced, they're gonna more have to be happy to deal with their driveway, whether it's blacktop or concrete, to have to pay for that to be replaced, rather than have to pay somebody to dig up the whole thing.
Yeah, but I can see them saying, wait a minute, you get it.
Yeah, I'd like to pull on your driveway now.
You pay.
I, I just think we open hand doors.
Well, I think we would just, could we just put that in there that we're not responsible for that? Because basically, if you have a water line break, you've gotta pay the village to fix it, and we've still gotta pay for that landscaping anyway to get. The village's got.
Exactly repaired, so.
If, if we build a new house these days, we'll paint, on Gale Drive, let's say that there's a spot down there, and, so the box ends at, at the road, who puts the line into the house, does the contractor?
Huh?
Contractor, I believe, with no. So the contractor, but that's underneath the cost of building the house, right? Part of the roof, yeah. And so, that is the responsibility, I mean, if we look at this backwards, if we go to build a new house, that is the responsibility of the homeowner. Now, all of a sudden, the homeowner puts it in, the next week the thing blows out, and we're paying for it, it doesn't make sense.
It would seem to have created perverse incentive for them to hire contractors that purposely put in crappy pipes.
Say that again?
It would seem to create a perverse incentive for them to hire contractors that do lowest bid and put in the crappiest pipes. They're putting in whatever, clay pipe or something, and the village has to come in and replace it with standard service, that would be very expensive.
I'm just saying that, I think that the curb, ended up the curb, has been on a line of demarcation for years, hasn't it?
My understanding is that most municipalities in the area, I can speak for many, definitely use curb as the line. I'm not familiar with any that do it at the meter for the host of reasons that are brought up here. It is possible, my understanding is you could do it, but there's a lot of problems you have to navigate to do it.
I, I just think we open hand doors.
So then, do we put into the water law that if you have a water line break, the village will replace it for whatever.
The meter to the property owner.
For whatever fee.
But that, I think, it's bad I wouldn't have a problem, that if, if we have the time and manpower, and, you know, that, that we will do it, but it's going to be time and expenses for it, I just, I don't think we can blanket.
You can't make anything, I'm like, it's only what you have in.
Yeah, and I'm just saying that, because we got senior citizens and, and really, but, I'm just saying, I don't think we should be responsible for it, it's, it's a service we can offer you if we have time and manpower, but. I, I, I just don't think we should open that hand door, but I think we, I mean, all of a sudden, we're doing landscaping.
Like National Field did over the whole winter, is what they did?
I got eighty bucks out of that.
Um, I have a question, like we've mentioned that the meters are in pits, and they're inaccessible in places, and shut-offs are inaccessible, and built over top of, would these curb boxes, or, I mean, where that connects to the main, is that something that might be under someone's house where we, we can't get to that without like possibly having to burrow through their house or something?
My understanding is that for the houses in the village, that there's no problem with things being built over the curb boxes, I don't know if every single one of them is accessible, but I've heard that almost every single one of the ones in the village are completely accessible to the DBW.
The curb boxes.
Yeah, the problem with the shut-offs is that it's for the ones in the town that someone got built over, because there was.
There's some shut-offs in the village they can't find as well.
Yeah, so, here's the other.
I just, I just, that, I had that in my head, because we can't shut off some people because they're like underhouses, or in pits, or, you know, they don't know where they are, so does that mean that, that that curb thing going off to their house is possibly inaccessible and under a house, or, or something, I don't, I don't know, I just, I just had it, you know, it just, it was a question.
The curb box should be at the curb. But this is Cataragus, and everything should be.
We do have things that are not.
Wooden pipes.
Here's my only other question with the lines going into the meter, we are getting ready to put all new meters in every building in this village.
Right.
When they go to change those meters, and they bust the line because these lines are so old, who's responsible for replacing that line? When we're the one changing the meter, and we break it?
Jake did mention that they had built that contingency into their, like, meter quote, when they did Randolph.
And that's what they would do vice as well.
I think you got a very valid question there, and I think that if we bust it, you buy it.
Right, and that would.
I mean, we, we as the village, if we bust it, we don't buy it, we fix it.
I mean, that was the way it sounded when he was explaining that they had built that into their quote for Randolph, that they, they realized there would be some pipes that would burst or break or whatever.
Yeah, and that's part of the, the bid as well, I believe.
Part of the, the meter bid, I believe.
Yeah.
And I think that we have.
Cause there will be, I'm sure, the cut.
Hitting on that, I think that we have to realize that sometimes when you fiddle with things, and a week or two later, something goes wrong, so. So I think that we have to be open that, that that might open Pandora's box in the sense that the pipe does break further down or such. So we have to be prepared to step back in and, they say, well, jeez, it was fine until you did that, now all of a sudden it doesn't, okay, we've accepted the error. So I, I think we have to have that as a contingency on that, so, and it'll be fair to the public.
Is it, where would we add that, do you know, Jen?
In the water law itself?
Yeah.
If you go into the maintenance section.
I don't mind.
Because right now, anything that's done by village maintenance is village responsibility. The maintenance section starts, what pages of the maintenance section start on the copy that you folks have?
Um. Maintenance care and responsibility for damages, five point oh.
Twenty-three, or?
Thirty-seven, I'm on mine.
Thirty-one, I'm sorry, thirty-one, it starts. It should be page thirty.
Mass production without standing.
Are you going off the one that I gave, yeah, responding, yeah, five.
Each have a different, well, I mean, I printed this off of the one you sent me, so.
Yeah, that's the one we're going on.
Yeah, but I, my, my, mine's not adding up to you, my pages aren't lining up with your pages.
Oh, because I added, what, it should.
Well, you added stuff that would shift the pages down after.
Oh, it would, but it should still match with what I have listed as far as.
About three pages off, four pages off.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I, I, I thought you should would.
Five dollars a day, you're gonna get fined.
All right, uh, so we are at maintenance care and responsibility for damage is where it starts off. Seals, leaks. Oh, would it have to be under lines, right, is what we would be discussing, would that just be a new section that we would add?
All right, the change that you would suggest, I'm thinking you're gonna want to put on page thirty-two. What I have, now I'll tell you what that is section-wise, so that, because we have somewhat different page numbers. I'm trying to find the overall section number here. Make sure it's the correct one. Five, four. All right, in section seven, meters, that's Roman numeral seven. Subheading five point zero, maintenance care and responsibility for damage. Village will maintain all meters and remotes at its expense, except meters and remotes for which the customer is liable and responsible for all damage while located on their premises. In the event of injury to or non-working the meter remote, customer shall notify the village promptly. The village will furnish and set another meter or remote to replace those frozen or damaged by causes, and the cost of repair shall be billed to the customer. Now, that's only for in the event of injury to or non-working the meter remote, presumably at customer negligence. After that, you see, village reserves the right to remove and replace any meter at any time as any part of the maintenance program for any other reason. You might want to add to that, for what you're saying, any damage caused to customers plumbing by replacement of the meter will be borne by the village.
Okay, uh, so you said five point oh, and on mine, five point oh is penalty for placing obstructions.
Are you in section seven?
I'm in the wrong section.
Yeah, look in section, Roman numeral seven, meters, and then go into five point oh.
What's Roman?
I mean, somebody could really take that if you wanted to add in there, they could take that ten years down the road if something happens to the park, could they not?
How do you mean take that? Yeah, that's true, so you want to say if it's only in the swap-out process, then you can have a temporary provision along with later sunsets. Say if it's, but if it's after two thousand seventeen, this doesn't apply?
He's weird, he's on page thirty-one, thirty-two in, in our copy, which should match yours because I printed it out of the email you sent.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, your copy has matched with Rose's, so that should be page thirty-two for yours, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so you got installation of meter, oh, maintenance care and responsibility for damage, right?
To the meter, or two pipes around the meter in that case. Now, at the last sentence of that entire section, village reserves the right to remove and replace any meter at any time as part of the maintenance program or for any other reason. And you could put in there, if such replacement causes damage to the customers' plumbing at the meter location, the village will repair it at the village's cost.
So if such damage occurs.
Say what you have, so that I know, so I can write it down, but I was suggesting something like. If damage occurs to the customers' line. The village will repair it.
At no cost?
At the village's expense. Or you could say at no cost to the customer, but.
Okay, so if such damage occurs to the customers' plumbing, um, the village will repair it at the village's expense and no cost to the customer. So that's clearly explained out that they're not.
At the time of.
While replacing a meter is what I have in mind, and I would recommend you want that, so it's very clear. If damage occurs to the customers' plumbing while replacing a meter specifically.
While replacing a meter?
The village will repair it, meaning the damage, I guess that could be considered a little vague, repair it at the village's expense.
Yes, okay.
Instead of saying, you wanted to say the damage to remove the.
Would the board like me to?
Repair the damage?
Yeah, technically that's a vague construction.
Dan, you would resend this water law that you just added that to?
Yes.
Would you, would the board like me to just print it out for everyone, so you?
I would be nice.
Okay.
So we all have.
I was trying not to kill another.
We had a long copy, but we're all on the long copy.
I, I was just trying not to kill another.
It would be too big of a pain to do so, so I might as well save some of the paperwork.
Um.
In order to print color, it has to go to my HP, which doesn't print double-sided.
Do you still want to do color for this one?
Uh, I don't know, I was, I mean, we were looking at the changes and the red indicated the changes, so, um.
Is the board comfortable understanding where the changes were so that the next print can be done black and white?
And then I can duplex it like.
I have no idea what these changes, but you want to, they better change the color.
Okay, I'll do it in color then.
Well, what, are you gonna do that now, or are we gonna do that another?
No, when you send me this, what you just added the change to.
Yeah.
Tomorrow-ish?
Yeah.
Um, then I will print out color copies for the board.
Okay.
Um, and they can pick them up.
Anytime?
Yeah, uh, once I've got them.
Okay.
Are they ever gonna be the same as says this thing?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
It's a lengthy law, and there are a couple versions floating around, so the prints are, have been considered.
I've been dating the versions for the date I received them, so I was pretty sure I made you guys all copies of the water law at the same time, but.
I, I, I don't know where, I got a couple, I don't know from where, but.
My apologies, obviously I picked the wrong one somewhere.
Well, it's okay.
It's not bad.
We're not.
It's gonna die.
No.
This dance fall in our soul.
We should fix that with wine, right? Um, so.
Get that torch.
Is, is there anything else before we close on discussing the water law? Um, so that y'all can review it, and then come to the regular board meeting, we can make the, what is it, we'll have to?
You'll post your notice, and you'll tell Rose when she has to do it by, and you'll pick when your public hearing is. Usually you'll pick when you're already gonna have a meeting.
You'll need to make sure that everyone's happy with the version of the law that's.
Right.
You gotta put that in your calendar now. Yeah, that's what I did too. Uh, is there anything else that anybody would like to see revised or added or anything before we move on from the water law? We're good? Um, all right, so we're at.
Water project.
So water, uh, water project, um.
Promotion for, I'm in a break, I'll second that.
Okay.
Door open or else?
Yeah, it's getting warm, isn't it?
Wait, what?
Work made, work made a motion to, um.
I can open that.
Also, I wonder what we're gonna.
Try to reset.
Let's call it ten minutes, cause they always run over and we'll try to get back to them with it. Oh, we got, we got a vote.
Seven?
Okay, so work made the motion and who seconded it?
First seven minutes says, both seconded.
Both seconded.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, carried in.